Good evening, folks. Can't hear. Good evening, everyone. If I could ask you to take your seats. We will start the Godly Board meeting. It is now six oh one. I call this meeting of the Godly Independent School District to order. Let the record show we have a quorum of members present. The meeting has been duly called and that the notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. At this time, if I could ask Dennis for the invocation, please.
Let's all pray together. Our kind and loving Father, we come to you at this time. We just glorify and praise you, Father, and praise your holy name. Father, we just ask you tonight to guide us and to give us wisdom and understanding of what needs to happen and the decisions we need to make. Father, we're so blessed to have this great district to be a part of and we are proud to serve in that capacity. Father, grateful for all those that are here tonight. Father, we just ask you to bless us, watch over us. Father, we're grateful for our teachers that are, I see many here in the audience, the wonderful people who have dedicated their lives to our students for educating them and supporting them in all kinds of ways. Thank you, Father, for those folks. Father, bless us and guide us, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Ms. Hill, we could have the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one invisible.
Next, we will move to recognitions.
Good evening, Board. I am incredibly excited tonight to present to you our CTE poster contest winners as a part of our recognition for National CTE Month. Just a little bit of background on what that is before I introduce these students. National CTE Month is a public awareness campaign to recognize the accomplishments of our CTE Career and Technology students and their teachers in the classroom and outside of the classroom. Just a few brief highlights of what we've done. You know, I could talk about this for hours on end, but as a part of our pre-K to Professionals Initiative, we want to start the conversation about what futures look like for our students starting in pre-K and continue that conversation all the way through the time that they leave us as graduates. That happens through events like our poster contests. We have our elementary winners here tonight, our video and film industry contests that we have going on right now with submissions open. It moves into middle school with things like our careers classes with Ms. Armstrong and the intentional work that she does with our students and helping students explore the different options available to them in middle school and high school. Our middle school tech apps and robotics, which is a new add for us in adding that robotics class this year. The intentional partnerships with business and industry professionals like the Chamber of Commerce, Cindy Irvin Insurance, Freedom Physical Therapy, ACS Bank, and many, many more who provide internships and mentorships for our students, giving back and growing the next generation of learners and leaders right here in our community. The Johnson County Master Gardeners is another great partner with our horticulture students in the greenhouse. Those students also earn industry-based certifications right here in our classrooms, things like PCT, our Patient Care Technician students, and our Health Science classes, Adobe and Microsoft certification in our business and graphic design and commercial photography classes. And I'm happy to share, we have our first-ever students in our ILEAD, our Information Technology Program, that are going to be earning Comp TIA A-plus certifications, Core Level One and Core Level Two this year, which is a huge industry add for us and an opportunity for our students to enter right into the workforce. The successes don't end there. They go to our student organizations like Taffy. We have thirteen students going to State next week with Ms. Burke. We've added a new organization called TSA. It's our Technology Student Association. Our entrepreneurship students and Ms. Simmons are doing that. She launched her first year, and all six of her students that competed are advancing to State, which is a huge, exciting win for us. Of course, our ag teachers and FFA, they've had a successful CDE season, a successful show season, and they're launching into LDE season. We already brought home our first-place win at the Fort Worth Stock Show and Rodeo with Flor Culture and Ms. Nola Briscoe. Our drone students are hosting an Arise Drone Competition here at the Wild in April. They are excelling and competing against some of the top teams across the nation. There'll be multiple teams here at that competition from across multiple states competing with our students. But most importantly, none of that happens without the great teachers in our classrooms creating those opportunities and fostering that energy and that excitement for learning. And I can stand firm and proud and say that the CT teachers that we have in our district are some of the best that I've ever worked with. So I know there's some of them here. I know there's some of them that have practices and cheer, banquets, and all kinds of things going on tonight, but if there are CTE teachers here tonight, I just want to take a second and recognize them. So if you'll stand, CTE teachers. They really are the difference makers for our kids. And I know you know how excited I am about the opening of the Wild, but the people that are more excited than me about the Wild are those folks and the students that get to go learn in those spaces. So they are difference makers, and that impact to our students is only going to be amplified and enriched with the opening of the Wild. More than seventy-seven thousand square feet of academic learning space, more than forty classrooms and learning environments for our students, where they'll learn about and engage what their future career is. These kiddos that are in elementary, winning their CTE poster contest for their grade level, the future that they have inside of Godly ISD because of forward-thinking and innovative approaches to building designs, the future is unlimited, and it's so exciting for me. I feel confident saying that these students are guaranteed to be more prepared and better prepared to enter the workforce and their next level in life, whether that's two-year, four-year trade, technical school, the workforce with stackable credentials or military. Our kids are going to be ready because of innovative thoughts and forward-thinking and the support that you guys of the school board has given to our Career and Technology Program. And that is something for us to celebrate during National CTE Month. So thank you, School Board, for supporting our Career and Technology Programs. Thank you to the greater Godly community for partnering with us and being a part of this endeavor. And most importantly, thank you to our CTE teachers for creating magic in the classrooms for our kids and exciting, igniting that excitement for what their future might look like and connecting their passions and interests with what they won't consider as a job, but what their future might hold for them. So thank you for that. Now, we are going to honor our grade-level CTE poster contest. So this is held in our pre-K through sixth-grade students at each of our campuses. If you guys want to come down to the front, we'll let you shake their hands. They have a trophy that they're going to get. Some of them did not know what they were here for tonight, other than they were, some of them were going to dinner, and some of them were going to go watch a sibling sing in the choir with Legacy. So this is a big surprise for them. Each campus picked the top three winner from their grade level, and then we had a Business and Industry Panel select winner. So a huge thank you to Stasha Black with ACS Bank and Rhett Roden with Roden Real Estate. I don't think they really understood the challenge that they were faced with when they volunteered to come select winners. Rhett was sweating bullets and saying, "Oh, man, I know I didn't draw like that good when I was in kindergarten. I never dreamed about being a paleontologist when I was in kindergarten." So they thought it was quite the challenge. But all joking aside, those partnerships like ACS Bank and Roden Real Estate are the reason why our programs are leveled up across the district. So all of that said, let's talk about these winners. So our pre-K winner this year is Grayson from Pleasant View Elementary School. Grayson, Grayson wants to be Santa Claus when he grows up. Our honorable mention for pre-K is Ms. Avery. Avery is also from Pleasant View Elementary. Avery wants to be a mommy when she grows up. Our kindergarten winner is Ms. Fallon from Legacy Elementary. Ms. Fallon wants to be a police officer. So Chief Quinteros, watch out, she's coming for your job. Our honorable mention for kindergarten is Ms. Harper. Harper is from Legacy Elementary. Ms. Harper wants to be a vet. Our first-grade winner is Wayland. Wayland is from Pleasant View Elementary. Wayland wants to be a scientist and make robots. Our first-grade honorable mention is Weston. Weston wants to be a truck driver from RB Godly. Our second-grade winner is Sela from RBG. Sela wants to be a teacher. Our second-grade honorable mention is Lila from Legacy. Lila wants to be a lawyer, and if you'll look at her thought bubble, the lawyers just say blah, 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 blah all day. Our third-grade winner is Holden. Holden wants to be a cardiac surgeon. Holden is from RBG, and we were so impressed with his anatomical correctness of his heart. Third-grade honorable mention is Sebastian from Pleasant View. Sebastian wants to be in the military. We love our military folks. Our fourth-grade winner is Gerardo. Gerardo was from RBG, and he wants to be an astronaut. Our fourth-grade honorable mention is Bopper. Bopper's from RBG, and he wants to be in the military and have his own YouTube channel. Our fifth-grade winner is a two-time winner. She won last year as well. Ms. Emily from Pleasant View wants to be a marine biologist. Our fifth-grade honorable mention is Katie. Katie wants to be an author from Pleasant View Elementary. And then our sixth-grade winner is Jimena from the sixth-grade campus. She wants to be an artist or a cartoonist. And our sixth-grade honorable mention is Michaela. Michaela wants to be a hairstylist. So we are so excited about the future careers of these students and can't wait for them to get into middle and high school as we help them explore those careers. Let's give them all one more round of applause.
All right, next, we will have the annual financial audit.
Thank y'all for having me. Hopefully, y'all can hear me okay. I'm actually in Houston right now attending CASO. My name is Lindsay Kennimer, and I'm an audit partner with Snow Garrett Williams out of Weatherford, and I'm going to take us through the highlights of the audit report tonight, and I'm going to start on page one of the audit reports, of the balance report. Page one is the certificate of the board. This is where you approve or disapprove the audit report. It requires the signatures of both the board president and the board secretary. This is going to be due to TEA by February the twenty-seventh. Spencer has the unbound certificate, and if y'all can sign and approve that and return that back to him, he can scan that, return that to me, and I will drop that into the PDF version of the audit report. I'll send it back over to him to do the submission to TEA. Now, I'm going to move over to page two, which starts our independent auditor's report. Pages two through five are our independent auditor's reports, and I just wanted to go over some of the key points, starting in the first paragraph under Report on the Audit of Financial Statements under Opinions. In the first sentence, we state that we have audited the financial statements of Godly ISB as of and for the year ended August thirty-first, 2023. If you move down to the next paragraph, we state in the first sentence that, in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of Godly ISB as of August thirty-first, 2023, and this is a clean or an unmodified audit opinion, which is the type of opinion you want to see in your auditor's report. That's the highest level of assurance that we can give you on the financial statements. If you move to the next paragraph under Basis for Opinions, we state that we conducted our audit in accordance with auditing standards that are generally accepted in the United States of America, as well as with government auditing standards that are issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. And that's an additional layer of auditing standards we have to follow, and that's required by TEA. To move over to the next page, on page three, at the very top of the page, under Responsibilities of Management, Management is responsible for the preparation and the fair presentation of financial statements in accordance with accounting principles that are generally accepted in the United States of America, as well as with the internal controls relevant to preparing those financial statements. In the next paragraph, under the Auditor's Responsibility, our objectives are to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements as a whole are free from material in the statement, whether due to fraud or error, and to issue an auditor's report that includes our opinions, which was the unmodified clean opinion. I'll move over a couple of pages to page five, and the very last paragraph, under Other Reporting, in accordance with government auditing standards, that additional layer of requirements that we have to follow, we also issued our report on our consideration of Godly ISB's internal controls over financial reporting and on our test of compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, grant agreements, and other matters. And in accordance with those standards, we did not report any internal control or compliance findings. Now, I'm going to move over and take a look at the financial statements on pages sixteen and seventeen. This is going to be a two-page exhibit. Pages sixteen and seventeen are the governmental funds balance sheet of August thirty-first, 2023. And just a quick overview of this financial statement, if you look on page sixteen, on the left side of the page, at the very top of the page, we have your assets. Underneath Assets or Liabilities, Deferred Inflows of Resources, and Fund Balances are at the bottom. There are five columns going across the page. The first column on the far left on page sixteen is your general fund. The next column is your debt service fund. If you move over to page seventeen, we have your capital projects fund, and those three funds were the major funds for the year. We have other governmental funds, which were the special revenue funds, and the last column on the far right is the totaling column. The total assets of the district were ninety-three million, oh, forty-three. Liabilities were eighteen million, two, forty-three. Deferred inflows were five, oh, three, six, thirty-five, and total fund balances were seventy-four million, two, ninety-six. And moving back towards the left of the page, if you move to the other governmental funds, that next column to the left, you had one point two million of fund balance in those funds. If you move over another column to the capital projects fund, you have sixty-two million, eight, ninety-seven of fund balance, and those are from your bond proceeds. Moving back over to page sixteen, in the debt service fund, you have five million, three, ninety-one. That's all restricted to pay your long-term debt. And in the general fund, you have four million, seven, sixty-one, which is made up of about two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, that's non-spendable for prepaid, and then about two-point-four million that's committed for construction and for equipment, and two million of unassigned fund balance. Now, I'm going to move over a couple of pages and go to pages nineteen and twenty. Pages nineteen and twenty are the income statements for the governmental funds for fiscal year 2023. And an overview of this financial statement, if you look on page nineteen, on the left side of the page, at the very top of the page, we have your revenues. Underneath Revenues are Expenditures, Other Financing Sources and Uses, and then Fund Balances again are at the bottom. We have the same five columns that are going across the page. Now, I'm going to start by going over the totaling column, that far-right column on page twenty, and then I'll move back over and take a look at the general fund. Your total revenues were fifty-two million, three, seventy-one. Total expenditures were one-twenty-six, seventy-five. Other financing sources were nineteen million, four, sixty, which was primarily bond proceeds. This brought us to a decrease in fund balances of forty-eight million and an ending fund balance of seventy-four million. And I did want to point out, if you move over a couple of columns to the capital projects fund, of that total decrease of forty-eight million, forty-four billion of that is your capital projects fund, so that's what you would expect to see, that that fund balance will continue to decrease until it goes to zero, when all of those bond proceeds have been spent. If you move back over to your general fund column, your operating fund on page nineteen, on the far left, in the general fund, you had thirty million, eight, sixty-nine of revenue, and this was up about two and a half million from fiscal year 2022, and that was a combination of an increase in your local revenues from property taxes and interest income of about three million, but state funding was down about five-hundred thousand, so the net effect of that was an increase of the two-point-five million. In the expenditures, you had thirty-three million, eight, thirty-eight in the general fund, and this was up about three-point-six million from twenty-two. The largest fluctuation there was in function eleven for instruction of about one-point-six million, and that was primarily due to increases in payroll. There were several new staff added for the new campus. Other than that, the other functions really didn't fluctuate that much. They all, most of them went up a couple hundred thousand, so the net effect in total was the three-point-six million dollar increase. You had other financing sources of seventy-three, oh, thirty-eight, and that brought us to a decrease in fund balance, fund balance of two-point-eight million, and again, the ending fund balance of four-point-seven million in your general fund. And I'm going to move over and take a look at the general fund budget, which is on page fifty-two. Pages fifty-two and fifty-three are the general fund budgetary comparison schedules. It has four columns that are going across the page. The first column on the left is your original adopted budget. The second column is your final amended budget. The third column were your actual revenues and expenditures, and the last column is the variance between your actual revenues and expenditures and your final amended budget. So looking through the variance column, your actual revenues came in under budget by about two points, at two-point-six million, and you can see in that column that that's all coming from the fifty-eight-hundred line, which is state funding. And in twenty-three, we saw that with several of our districts. ADA numbers didn't quite bounce back the way I think people expected them to post COVID, so we've seen a lot of actual state funding numbers had come in less than what people had projected. So that was pretty, pretty typical from the district that we audit that we saw that. In your expenditures, you had, actual expenditure came in under budget by about seven-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand. And I'm going to move over to page seventy-five, which should be the last page of your balance report. Page seventy-five are the required school first indicators for the auditor's report. And I don't want to read through all of these, but I did want to point out a couple that are directly related to the auditor's report, and the first one is the very first line, SF one, was there an unmodified opinion in the financial report on the financial statements as a whole? And yes, there was. The next one, SF two, were there any disclosures in the report? Were other sources of information concerning nonpayment of any terms of debt agreements at fiscal year end? No, there was not. If you move down towards the middle of the page to SF five, did the report disclose any instances of material weakness in internal controls over financial reporting and compliance for local, state, or federal funds? No, it did not. And then SF six, were there any disclosures in the report of material noncompliance for grants, contracts, and laws related to local, state, or federal funds? And no, there was not. And no, there was not. So all of the answers, all of these responses were favorable, and y'all scored a hundred percent on these required school first indicators. And that's the last item I have to go over for the audit. And y'all have any questions, please feel free to ask. I'm not sure if the audio is working both ways, but I'm happy to answer any questions or if there's questions afterward that you want to email me, that's fine, too. I'm ha- happy to answer whatever I can.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lindsay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right, we'll start with construction updates.
Hello, everyone. Uh, there's a couple I don't remember meeting, but I'm Alan Spencer with Reader General Contractors. I'm Alan Spencer. Okay. Hello, I'm Alan Spencer with Reader General Contractors, the superintendent on the new Fine Arts Edition. Better? Hello?
Yep.
All right. Hello, Alan Spencer with Reader General Contractors on the Fine Arts Edition. Uh, and just here to go through a small report for you guys and answering questions you might have as far as the addition goes.
Faith, do we have any pictures for Marty? Or you can show the drone video.
All right, so here we have an aerial photo. This is of the northeast side of it. You can see a group of people up on the roof of the storm shelter. Uh, we are finally getting our roof on there. That has been a, a big help to get that so we can push this project to completion. Next, this is the southwest view of it. Uh, you can see we're getting ready to install metal panels. We installed canopy in the back. Uh, concrete is fairly well done on the bottom level. We still have the balcony level to do, but we're working on that as well. This is the ensemble room. We've got duck work and stuff in place. Oh, excuse me, this is choir. I'm sorry. We have duck work in place, and we are, we actually painted today. So that's a big step right there. We're into finishes. Uh, this is the main corridor that'll exit out the east side of the building, uh, and is scheduled for paint very soon. The next steps after that would be sealing and putting in lighting and all the finishes on that as well. Uh, this is, uh, I think it's percussion. Again, we're, all the rooms are in basically the same shape right now, with the main area being worked on now as the band area. You can go through that one, Marty. So here we are in the band hall. We've got a lot of materials in there right now, but they are sheet rocking walls, um, putting up framing. Uh, much of the overhead is done, and that's hopefully going to move along fairly quickly now that we do have a roof. And then this is the east, the west side of the building with the new canopy ramp. Uh, waiting on handrails out here and get metal paneling so we can turn this section over to you guys as soon as possible. Okay. Any questions?
Questions for Alan?
Has our date of completion changed?
Currently, we are looking at a mid-April completion on this, due to weather and technical issues on the roof, having to change products.
Okay. Thank you, Alan. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Next, S and P.
Please pick up the mic so everybody can hear.
I think he turned it off.
There it goes. How's that? All right.
All right. So this is aerial from the C T. This is from the west elevation. Uh, the aerials are actually, this is from the middle of last week, so you'll see a lot more progress out there as you drive by. We have, uh, the metal panels are coming to completion. They'll actually be done on the C T E come the end of, uh, the end of next week. So all the C T E will have metal panels up. You can see that they're wrapping around on the south side by the baseball fields right now. This is down, uh, from the same elevation. If you look in there, you can see we have the concrete and the paving poured. Uh, it, don't know if you've had a chance to walk through there. We actually have the soffit metal panels up, so you have a real nice purple ceiling through there, uh, right there at the entrance, as well as some red accents on the sidewalk. This is right through the main entrance. Uh, this is as you walk in. You can see we have finishes in. We have protection down on the floor because that's all been polished. So you have finishes on the floor. Ceiling grid is in. This actually gets a mesh system in there up top. So that's almost exactly what it'll look like when it is installed up there. Uh, you see, we have lightings in, and the desk is built. That's going right there underneath those pendants, and that will be out here shortly to get installed. This is the store right next door. You can see we have the slats on all the walls, all the finishes up, the grid is in, cabinets in, protection on the floor down. So we're, we're really knocking the finishes out in these areas. This is going through some areas on the first and second floor of the C T E. We can, you can see we have the, all the tile on the wall. Fixtures installed, partitions will be here, uh, at the end of this month to start installing in the bathrooms, and you can see the bathroom. You can see we have carpet down in some areas, painting done, ceiling lights in, and all the grid up as well. Uh, this is looking at the connector. You can see we have the alternate that's, uh, the overlook over the baseball and softball field. The top slab has been poured there. We'll start installing the railing. We've got the stairs installed, so that's really coming together there. And that's looking at it from the, the deck itself, trying, giving you a look of what you'd see looking at the baseball field. There'll be railing there and a canopy as well. This is from the north side of the football field, uh, looking south. You see, we have the E layer down on the field that is complete now. Uh, once that, you can see, if you look out there now, they have lines pop, uh, getting ready to receive the turf and get that installed and going. So that's going to make a real big difference on the appearance out there once that changes from this gray to a football field. Uh, this is the arena elevation. We have quite a bit more panels up, but you can see, uh, all the roofing's complete. Units are set, and we have all your installation behind there. We're in progress going through. This is probably one of the biggest differences in there. We got all the scaffolding down through the arena, really opening up what it looks like in there. Uh, basketball goals are all installed, scoreboards up, so it's, it's made a huge difference in there. We have the wood flooring here. You can see it's right there getting acclimated, so that is the basketball floor. Uh, and we'll get that installed once everything is moisture tested and ready to be put in. So right now, it's just getting acclimated. Some more photos looking up at your pre-cast. This is at one of the restrooms actually in the C T, or on the arena facing the east elevation, showing we got the wall tile in there, got the ceilings up, got getting ready to do some trim out through there. And this is the last, though, looking at the visitor bleachers, uh, Area F. You can see we have, we're pouring, poured that deck up on the second floor there. That's the last vertical portion there. There's some small columns that go, like half-size columns that goes on the top there, but that's the last elevated deck there. Any questions?
Can you give us the dates of completion for all the different areas, so Arena, C T E, Turf, and Area F?
Yep. So right now, in the C T, in the C T Wild, we're tracking, uh, March thirty-first. That's with a large weather delay we had, or impact we had in January. We're looking, working the weekends, actually working to suck that back to the original date that we gave the last meeting. So we're working through that right now on that. The arena's still tracking for five twenty-one. And that's the same with Area F, and the turf, the field and the turf is going to be completing just after the C T E.
How does that work with our soccer schedule? We've got home games starting soon. Okay. So what are we doing with our home soccer games? And then Area F, I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Area F is completing with the arena, so it'd be five twenty-one.
So we have graduation, um, really close to that Arena completion date. Um, do we foresee any issues with having graduation?
That's a hard date for us. We're pushing everything to make sure we're getting that, so there's no plan to not hit that date.
Mr. Flood, do we have a Plan B if they don't hit that date? Okay. Thanks. Yeah, I know. I expect you to hit the date, but I just want to make sure that.
Plan B is always good.
We've, we've heard these dates keep moving back and back, so I'm not going to be foolish and not ask if we don't have a Plan B for graduation. It's too big. It's the biggest thing we do for our students.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Travis.
Thank you.
Our next report will be Seabass signaling. Mr. Carnes. Yeah, we can take a look, a little view of the drone.
I want to confirm that the drone video is done by our students and C T E.
Mr. Carnes, why don't you go ahead and talk to us about Seabass signaling?
Okay. All right. Well, good evening, and excited, super excited to bring this to you. Although I can't top Dr. Nix with the C T E poster winners, but Seabass, obviously super important to us, and we continue to work on this throughout the year. We're not waiting on one test one day. We're, we're evaluating, uh, what is the benefit, what is, how is it, what is our effectiveness? And so this is campus-driven, and so the campus principals are going to come up and do, uh, uh, most of the presentation. Um, just as a reminder, we are giving you, um, a couple of pillars at a time rather than all seven at once. And so tonight, we bring you student learning and progress, which we will always bring. And then, uh, the other pillar tonight is student readiness. So student learning and progress and student readiness. And so, um, anyway, with that, I need, uh, they're ready.
All right. Well, good evening. Um, I'm here, excuse me, for Pleasant View. Um, a lot of the elementary is similar, but we do still have some differences. Uh, for the, uh, pillar one, um, when we were talking about, um, preparing students and their academic skills, the areas that we're mostly focusing on is create opportunities for in-depth learning and learning students' needs. Those are our focus, um, through our ARC and our, um, math program, where we're really making sure that the teachers are streamlined in terms of their, um, training and delivering. Is it coming up?
Marty, can you click on the signaling chart?
Oh, okay.
Link at the bottom.
Oh, there it is. It's a link. There we go. Okay, all right. All right. So, um, the red area there is to what degree do we support and create opportunities for in-depth learning? And like I was saying, that's a focus for our American reading and our, um, math programs that we are streamlining and providing training on and support. And I feel like, um, for us, we're on time with how we're progressing with that. Uh, we're really seeing the results that we would like to see, um, from the fidelity, and the teachers are feeling much more comfortable with the delivery of those programs. And then when you move into domain two, our main focus area was two point three, to what degree do we teach students to focus on their future? And our, um, uh, area of focus on this one was, uh, focusing on careers and providing a career day, uh, for students, and, um, also looking at building in clubs. Um, you may notice that I do have a slight adjustment to this one from being on track to an adjustment needed. Um, so once we started formulating our plan for providing the clubs and the careers, we realized for the spring semester, um, that trying to find dates to plug that in in the middle of the year was not going to make it to where, it was going to feel rushed. The teachers felt a little overwhelmed with it. So what we decided to do, we actually met in our, um, campus improvement team meeting, and the teacher's suggestion was to, um, get feedback from the students this year about what they would like. So like, we'll take our fourth grade, ask them their input, so the fifth grade teachers can build the clubs next year to formulate around what their interests are. So we feel like that we will be able to go ahead and build those, um, dates into the calendar ahead of time, have the materials ready, have the interests ready, and it'll just come off as a more solid program than just trying to rush it for the sake of checking it off the box. And so, um, that was some input from the teachers, so we decided to go with that, and so that's why we're pushing that out. And so we should be back on track with this to start at the very beginning of next school year. Any questions for Pleasant View?
Hi, good evening. I'm going to speak about R B Godley and our signaling. Um, I want to address, um, one point two and one point three specifically in pillar one. So in one point two, we are also focusing on our, um, American Reading Company implementation, as well as the, uh, math curriculum. Another thing that we're focusing on within that is our small group instruction, making sure that, um, there's some continuity in that across all the grade levels, from pre-K all the way to fifth grade. And we just see a lot of value in students getting that, um, smaller group time with teachers to focus on their individual learning needs within the classroom. So that's a big focus for us there at one point two. Um, one point three, our focus there that we have talked to you as, or the board about several times already is our data-focused P L C. And so we continue to refine the process of our P L C, making sure that, um, we are discussing things not just at an observational level, but with hard data. Um, one of the ways we're addressing that right now in real time is, uh, Mrs. McCauley and myself are building out what we're calling a data dashboard for our teachers. Um, it'll be aligned for each grade level, and it'll include all of the, um, assessments that they do throughout the year in chronological order, so that they can kind of see the whole story of a student, rather than looking at the data in silos, which can happen when you're looking at just map data or just star data, just for example. We're hoping that this helps paint a broader picture of each student in every classroom. So it's a focus. We're going to roll it out, hopefully the last nine weeks to kind of practice, so that we'll be ready to go at the first nine weeks next year. And the next pillar, um, pillar two point one.
Before you move on.
Yes, sir.
Question for you.
Uh-huh.
If you don't mind. So this dashboard, is this just a pilot, or is this now going to go across all?
So, this dashboard, is this just a pilot or is this now going to go across all elementaries and extend maybe to middle school, high school? What's, what's the thought?
I don't know. I just started making it myself and so, I haven't really shared it with anyone yet. We haven't tried it. So, I, I actually am presenting it on the 29th to the teachers and PLC to start getting their feedback, like, does it roll the way I think it's going to roll? What did I miss? What, you know, what else could we include in that picture of the student? And of course, I would share the wealth once we, I don't want to give them like a half aired up tire right now, you know? Like, it's not quite ready to go yet. But yes, once it's ready to go, we'd be more than happy to share that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And then, okay, back to pillar two, 2.1 and student readiness. I'm sorry, I have notes. I just didn't want to forget to tell you guys anything. So, some of the ways that we have addressed student readiness at RB Godley is our house system. It's up and going. We've done several community projects this year. The kids love it. We've, it's, it's the refinement process still, but again, it's giving us a chance to get in front of them and talk about all kinds of things. I've shared with, with the board a video that we made for our first responders and things like that. Just opens up a lot of conversation with them. We have our enrichment clubs, which students switch at semester, so they get to pick a club for first semester. And then, second semester, they get to come out and try something all new. And we're about to do that this Friday. They'll, they'll start their new club for the semester. We've also had a guest speaker on campus. We had a meteorologist come and visit us. Well, it was virtual. He's supposed to come, but then he had to be virtual. So, that was really awesome, bringing in some career aspects there. And then, of course, our poster contest winners from tonight. So, that's what I have for you this evening. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So, summer '24, you were just talking about 2.1. Are we on the right school? Yes. Okay. It goes from green to yellow. So, is that something that you're predicting? That's part of the signaling that I'm not quite up to speed on yet, so it's a prediction of some sort?
Yes, ma'am. It's a prediction of some changes that could be coming.
Okay. But we aren't sure yet, is that, I mean, help me understand that a little bit better.
Well, I think also, sometimes it's really nerve-wracking to just keep something green because we want to work on everything.
Yeah.
And so, we often put a little yellow there, like, because I have something in my mind that I think might be coming.
Okay.
So, that's what that's for. It's a placeholder for something that could come. And if it doesn't, then I will update you.
Oh, no, you're good. I, I wasn't, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
It's okay.
I was trying to understand more than just the basics.
Absolutely.
So, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
I would like to include my signaling in our legacy spotlight, if that's okay with you. I have a whole slide that explains it. So, I'm going to pass it on to sixth grade then. It's very similar to what they've already stated.
I too would like to pass on, I'm just kidding. No, I have the pleasure of presenting for Godley Middle School, which includes sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And we did both recently present changes that have, have come from CBAS, so I will keep this brief. The two areas that we have changes in, aligning learning with students' needs. So, from that, we formed our PLCs, our professional learning communities. We have given common planning times for our teachers, really trying to get our teachers the, the proper tools and resources to be able to analyze the data. Ms. Wynn does her Friday quick checks. So, get as much information to the teachers to allow them to align the learning to the needs of the students as best they can. And then, our other change is having students focus on their futures, which of course, we have our leadership class that Mrs. Baxter teaches. We have our careers class that Mrs. Armstrong teaches. So, we focus on those, but we also have our student planners that students are learning their executive function skills, learning how to take notes, learning how to plan on their own. Any questions? Thank you.
You guys have done a great job. Legacy, I, you have a really big shoe or two to fill. They've done a great job the last couple of meetings. I'm sure you're going to knock it out of the ballpark tonight too. But you guys have done a great job with our highlight of the campuses and I'm worried for Mr. Flood.
Good evening. Good to see you all. Thank you. It's good to be here tonight. So, for the high school, one of the main focuses we were working on was 1.1, preparing students. We were targeting specifically ESL and SPED students on English I and II EOC scores. We used a method called for text evidences that we put in our English classes that we have now transitioned into our other core classes for freshman and sophomore students. We've seen some great gains. The initial RDA reports from Texas, I don't have those numbers for you right now, but they came out and they actually improved our scores from last year. So, we did see gains in those specific categories, which is what we were targeting in that area. So, we, we were proud of our English teachers. They were really the ones that led the work. They did some special meetings last year on half-days, doing some PLC work, getting together and planning how they wanted to do that. Because it's just really difficult to pull that text evidence that kids want to use in their responses on the STAR test. But they did a lot of work with the ESL kids and the SPED kids and they made that work, so we're really proud of them. So, we are on track with that one. We are trying to systemize it a little bit. Science people and engineers don't like to use the same words English people like to use. So, we are trying to honor both sets of thinking that people do, whether it be the hypothesis method in a science class or the text evidence in an English class. It's the same formula, but they're used with different names. So, we kind of honor that so kids can see how different types of people think. And pillar 2.1 and three for student readiness, this is an area that we, we went to SchoolLinks last year. I want to give a lot of praise to Nikki Nix, her coming on board. She's done a lot of the legwork behind the scenes to help make this work. And we have implemented it in Wildcat Business. It's been okay. It's working. We think we can get more out of it. We think we can do more with it. There's some other system changes we look at we're going to make for next summer. So, you can see on there, we already have an adjustment needed that we're predicting we're going to make this summer to revamp some Wildcat Business strategies and tactics. We talked with our teachers at one of our, one of our freshman development days where they kind of talked about what's working and not, what's not working. And so, we're going to revamp some things with Wildcat Business. We just didn't feel comfortable doing it in the middle of the year right now because it's going to be a pretty big lift. So, we're going to wait till the summer, redo it next year for Wildcat Business specifically and try to work with the kids on what they're doing. Additionally, we started using SchoolLinks this year for course requests. So, SchoolLinks is where the kids take inventories about future careers they want to do. We also started having them pick their courses on SchoolLinks this year to try to match CTE programs and pathways they want to take with careers they want to get into. So, trying to align those two systems together. We are working on it, talking to Skyward. That has been one of the greatest challenges we have faced is this program, Talking with Skyward, which is our student information system that we use here in the district. Sometimes it works, sometimes it's a little bit of a headache. I appreciate Marty Oliver. He has done a lot of work as well, trying to make those two systems work together. But we are, our counselors have taken on the lead with that. They've done a lot of extra work to make it happen, so I'm really proud of Ms. Copeland and Ms. Harper for making that work. But that is the big lift we're doing right now with those two programs. So, any questions or anything? Thank you.
Yeah. And our principals really deserve a round of applause for all the work that they do. And yeah. So, we're, we're keeping this on the front burner and, you know, one of the things in here, the benefit at, at 1.1.2 is exploring at a deep level. And I believe that our campuses, our, our principals, our teachers, they're exploring things at a deep, at really the deepest level that we ever have. And we're not perfect. We, we would never stand up here and say that we're perfect. You're seeing that there are good things going on and that there are things that we're also working on and trying to get better at. And so, tremendous work and, and just compliment to them and the work they do. So, we'll be back after quarter three to give you an update there on the next two pillars. And then, of course, then in August, we'll have our full community report for you as well. So, thank you all.
Next is our public participation. At this time, we extend the opportunity for public participation in compliance with Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code. Public participation provides the general public the opportunity to address the board regarding topics on the agenda. Persons attending the meeting and wishing to speak must sign up. I have a number who have. Each individual addressing the board will have three minutes to make their presentation. Personal attacks on board members, district employees, and students will not be allowed. All participants are expected to speak with respect and civility and maintain a calm, professional demeanor. Upon the expiration of three minutes, I'll call the next person signed up. Please note that the Opens Meeting Act does not require the board to respond to comments or complaints. So, we will now begin and Ms. Goodlow will keep track of the time and notify you when you have one minute left. First on the list, Ms. Nova Olsen.
Good evening. Transparency. To borrow from the greatest movie of all time, you keep using that word. I do, do not think it means what you think it means. Since my tax dollars pay to keep this district operating, I'd love to be able to review the information in the district financial report, the monthly investment and cash report, and budget amendments, to know if there would be concerns or not. But unfortunately, the board book documents are not made available to taxpayers. So, I'm going to ask again, like myself and others have asked many times before, I've come to you again and again in asking you to provide those documents for review. And in fact, last summer during the budget meeting, I even asked Mr. Stevenson about those documents and I was severely retaliated against for even asking such a thing. So, if you truly believe in transparency and you have nothing to hide financially or otherwise, please make these documents available to your taxpayers before the meeting so they may speak on agenda items from an informed perspective. Thank you.
Next is Liz McCoby.
Good evening. I want to speak on behalf of Agenda Item 8A, Legacy. First and foremost, I want to say that I have two students that attend Legacy and we have a group of amazing teachers and staff there. My kids come home every day with great stories and smiles on their face. I just want to say thank you to our teachers and our staff for doing such a great job. I do want to address some social media posts real quick. There was a post made about dissatisfaction by one of our teachers. If you are dissatisfied with the school, the faculty, the growth, the community, it may be time for you to reconsider and relocate or find an alternate education for your student. I was very disappointed in that post because this was our relocation. We chose Godley. We came from Mansfield and chose to move here. Small town, small district. I've been very, very pleased, but I was very disappointed when I saw that post on social media from one of our teachers. My desires for the district may not match everyone in this room, everyone in this, this community, but they're still my desires. I still should have a right to say that without being attacked on social media. I'm not saying I have been, but in fear of that, some of us are afraid to speak out. I believe in our kids' education, just as you do and everyone in this room. Again, I, I want to just make this about the teachers and we really are happy and have enjoyed being here in Godley. And we are so happy that everyone is concerned about our education. Thank you.
Next, we have Bethany Van Wyatt. Van Wart, I'm sorry.
Good evening. My name is Bethany Van Wart and I am a first grade teacher at Legacy Elementary. Seeing as tonight is highlighting our school, we as educators want to speak on the climate and culture of our school and share what we are passionate about in our profession in response to some recent accusations regarding the lack of education in children. I would like to invite anyone who is a passionate public educator to stand with me in unison as I continue. Hi, Kayla. I don't know if you remember me, but I taught your son in first grade. And we as teachers here at Legacy have come together to make a statement, united as one. We are not only shocked, but hurt to hear the words you spoke, that children are being dumbed down and intentionally uneducated in public schools. You claim that you are not talking about teachers. Who then do you think is directly dumbing down the kids? We are the ones on the home front. We are the ones teaching them. You cannot insult the lack of education in kids without including teachers in the equation. Your statements about the dumbing down of kids in public schools indirectly or directly affiliates us teachers with the Communist Manifesto. We do not appreciate this. You can understand how we as educators are taking your public statement very personally? Whether you intended to make us feel this way or not, you have. We do what we do for the overall well-being of children. They are precious, unique, strong, smart, and loved. And we show up every day to make sure they know that. That being said, we believe public schools-
One minute.
-are not failing children. Society is relying too heavily on schools to be the parents and the teachers. The decline of the family is one of the reasons learning is suffering. Children need to have a stable environment where they receive encouragement, help, and motivation. While it is true that Texas is low in reading proficiency, we believe there are many factors that contribute to that. Some factors are how much literature a child has been exposed to prior to coming to school. Another factor, poverty, behavior issues, and whether one believes in COVID or not, it has had a very real effect on education and parenting. Have you driven through our community? Are you aware of the struggles families are facing? Do you understand how that affects a child's ability to learn? This is the current reality that educators are facing and we are standing here tonight because we haven't given up on our students. We show up day after day because we are fighting for them.
Next, we have Ms. Jenna Plemons. Nope.
Lacey Long.
Oh, you were next on my list. Okay. Ms. Long.
Hi. My name is Lacey Long. I am a third grade teacher at Legacy Elementary. It has been mentioned, I'm not agreeing with our kids having Chromebooks and wanting to go back to regular textbooks. As we know, the state is no longer producing or providing those books for our kids anymore. Now, we can purchase a Chromebook with a multitude of books that they have access to every single day. We are evolving with the times and by not providing Chromebooks, we are not readying our kiddos for the continued education and beyond. You said you believe in paper and pencils. Well, we do too. If you visit our classrooms, you would actually see shelves of books everywhere. You would walk down our hallways and you would see pieces of writing from kindergarten to fifth grade. You would see our walls full of written narratives, informational pieces, and many other things that students have produced. If you walked down the halls in the mornings, you would hear us loudly sharpening pencils as we get ready to put them in the students' hands. You stated that you would like to see more parent involvement. At Legacy, we are very proud of our parent involvement. We have PTO meetings monthly. We have parent volunteers. Parents accompany us on field trips and they read in our classrooms. We are consistently sitting down with parents and listening to their concerns. We are in constant communication with them and we're always available to speak with them. It would make sense that you may not be aware of all the possibilities being offered to our parents since you're not in our schools observing what we do on a daily basis. While we believe that social, emotional learning should begin at home, the reality is that many children come to school without any of these coping skills. Until a child can manage their emotions and big feelings, they struggle with learning. We not only teach our students the TEACs that are required of us, but we also teach them the life skills that they may not be, have been taught at home. This is not the fault of the child.
One minute.
Some of them are dealing with hunger, anxiety, stress, fear, depression, and so much more that we just can't see. The effects of these struggles are devastating to a child's development, including their education. We as educators have to foster a loving and safe environment first and then- First, and then we can begin to teach our students. We pour our heart and souls into these children every day like they are our own. This is more than a job to us. It's a life-changing work. If you visited our classrooms, you would see why a piece of our hearts belong to our students. If you read with them, you would see how proud they are of their accomplishments. If you ask them what they can do, they would tell you. We can do hard things and we can do great things. We believe in them. Thank you.
Ms. Plemons?
Oh yes.
Okay.
My name is Jenna Plemons and I am an instructional facilitator at Legacy Elementary. Kayla, it is becoming unclear to us the reasons you have for wanting to be on our school board. You have claimed in the past that you are here to fight for the students and teachers and support the teachers. But what message is it sending to us? Is it sending us when you don't trust us with your own children? You do not speak positively about us or our district. And we as educators do not feel supported by you. How does saying what you said on your radio broadcast give parents in the district competence in their kid's school and promote stability in the community? We consider ourselves to be at the core of the education system. We teach our curriculum with integrity. If you doubt the validity and the efficacy of our teaching standards, we kindly invite you into our classrooms to see for yourself the work and dedication that goes into growing our students, not dumbing them down. We understand decisions are being made at the state and national level that we may or may not always agree with. However, what we can do today is support them, support our town, our community, schools, and our classrooms while keeping students as our highest priority. We respectfully ask that you choose your words more carefully. So instead of us feeling slandered, we feel supported. And instead of us feeling crushed, we feel like you believe in us. We ask that you publicly support our superintendent, our assistant superintendent, our principals, our vice principals, our teachers, and our students. We will continue to plod on in the face of adversity. We will continue to educate and grow our students to the best of our ability. We would like to think, we would like to conclude by saying thank you to the other school board members who have always shown us their support and we have no doubt that you'll continue to do so. It does not go unnoticed and we appreciate you more than you know. Sincerely, the educators from Legacy Elementary.
Excuse me, but since my name was called out, I would like to have a chance to respond to this. I did respond several times to the social media post. I never talked about, not one time. I was talking about a national and a state publication. And I responded multiple times to the teacher apologizing that she read words. Sorry that you all feel that way. I certainly support our teachers. And my children were blessed to have amazing teachers. I've said it multiple times. They did attend here for several years. My son has special needs and I homeschool for their educational purposes. And I support all education and I thank the teachers. You have the freedom of speech to come up and say what you did and I will allow that because I believe in freedom of speech. However, if the shoe was turned around, I've seen parents be trespassed for saying way less. That's all I have to say.
Ms. Hill, let's talk about our Legacy Spotlight. Celebrate these kids and these teachers. All right.
I am so excited. My name is Amy Hill. I'm the principal of Legacy Elementary, Jamie Duckett Assistant Principal. And we are so excited to go ahead and share the spotlight with you all tonight for our amazing team and students. So our motto for this year is Together Everyone Achieves More. That is our Legacy motto. Oh, I'm getting ahead of myself. If you are a staff member of Legacy Elementary, I know it's kind of hard to tell who's who right now, just kidding, in all their matching shirts. If you will please stand. Awesome, I would like to give you a round of applause. I did not put individual group pictures in my slideshow as a fear I would leave somebody out and that would make my heart hurt. And so I just would like to thank you all for being here tonight. As our amazing students are getting into position, this is our Troublemakers Choir. I am so excited to announce that last year, Mrs. Bowling introduced our choir and they have done amazing. She started with seventeen students last year and has grown the choir to fifty this year. It is open to fourth and fifth grade students to try out. This year, they did a Christmas concert for parents. We performed it for the school and they actually were able to go to local nursing homes and perform for the residents of the nursing homes. And we are going to bless you with a little song, if you don't mind.
Parents, feel free to come up on the front row if you want to take videos. Yes, yeah, come on up, come on up.
And while they're doing this, I also want to tell the kids, thank you so much for your patience tonight. We really appreciate it. You have been amazing, parents. Thank you, staff. Thank you. All right, choir, Troublemakers, if you will stay there, we're going to get a picture with you and the board. And while they're getting into place, I also wanted to tell you, the Friday after graduation, the Troublemakers have been invited to sing at the Railroaders baseball game. So we'll be getting more information out about that. That's a big deal and I'm so excited for y'all. All right, you're going to smile for the camera. Awesome, one final round of applause for our amazing Troublemakers. I'm so proud of you. All right, y'all can have a seat. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, y'all can have a seat. While they are having a seat, I would like to... All right, I'd like to brag about another group that we have on campus. It's our Wildcat Ambassadors. They performed our pledges for you earlier this evening. Not only do they show up every day for daily morning duties and afternoon duties, they open car doors in the mornings, they're there to greet the bus riders, they raise and lower our flags. We've had many lessons on how a flag should be raised, what direction it should go. Ambassadors for new students that come. They have also filled blessing bags for our students in Godly ISD at a local
Ms. Hill.
Yes, sir.
Do you mind pausing one moment? For everyone that's leaving, thank you very much for coming and bringing your children. That was tremendous.
Thank you, guys.
It was awesome.
That's the reason that we are building the facilities we are with the choir
Yes.
facilities, these children.
That's right.
This is the reason.
That's right. It's already growing. I agree.
Sorry for the interrupt, thank you.
I've got to say, Ms. Hill, I don't know if I enjoyed looking at the smile on the kids' faces more or the smiles on the teachers' faces more. And they're dancing with them and
That was the best. Waving their hands like, yeah.
Yep.
It's every day like that. All right, so back to our Wildcat Ambassadors. They have done amazing things, filled blessing bags for our students that we disperse every week. They have also worked with organizations like Kaylee Slay, which collects Christmas toys for families in need in Johnson County. Mrs. Moss and Mrs. Brooks do an amazing job leading that up. And so we are very, very proud of our ambassadors. All right, some goals we have of Legacy. Number one, first and foremost, is a safe learning environment. We do not feel like students can perform to their best ability unless that they know that they're safe. So one of a couple of the things they know, procedures, door procedures, not to let anyone in when they're not supposed to. Our inside doors are locked. We have doorbells in the hallway that ring on the inside of the classroom so that they can stay locked and kids can come and go without, with minimal distraction. But also other safety within student groups. We have a mantra at Legacy and the other elementaries called our roars. And a lot of our students left, but our teachers know this, so let's see how well they do. Every morning in announcements, we always tell them, Legacy, let me hear your roars. R.
Respect.
O.
Honor.
A.
Attitude.
R.
Responsibility.
And S.
Safety.
And then we always finish with Legacy be kind.
It creates a world of difference.
It's like music to my ears. Well done. Another big goal of Legacy is student engagement. We're going to talk about enrichment clubs and imagination station in just a moment. I would like to brag on the Legacy All-Stars. These are students that go above and beyond. We used to call them Positive Office Referrals, but with the sports theme of team, we decided to go with Legacy All-Stars. These students are ones that show and exemplify their roars. Teachers turn in the names on a form. They get a little backpack tag that says Legacy All-Star and we celebrate them during morning message. We have lots and lots of student engagement that goes on, on campus. In kindergarten, I dare you to find anything that's not engaging for those kiddos. You have to keep them engaged to keep them engaged, right? In first grade, we are seeing lots of writing practice. They start from thinking maps to complete thoughts on paper. You can see this by going through the hallways. We keep their hallway writing starting from the very beginning of the year and we just layer it on top. So if you come through our hallways, you can flip through their writing and see the progression. It is just absolutely amazing. In first grade, they also talked about government and forms of government and leadership and they held their own election per classroom. It was the cutest little, you can see some of it in the bottom right-hand corner, some vote for Whitley class president and et cetera, those lined our halls. In second grade, they wrote a bug book in American Reading Company. They grafted all things in math from I-Color to who will win the Super Bowl. In third grade, third grade is my grade of room transformations. If it can be transformed, they do it. They transformed their room into a Starbucks for Starbucks tasting and they got to book taste all different types of genres. They had a Fraktoni's Pizzeria the other day where they practiced fractions in the form of pizza. They transformed their room for a Super Bowl football theme to get the kids excited and they had reading passages that they answered comprehension questions based on football. In fourth grade, our fourth graders become animal detectives in science and they examined skulls of animals and looked at their beak and their teeth size and determined with little magnifying glass, I believe there's a picture up there, of trying to decipher what they eat, what kind of animal they were. They read a novel, Best Christmas Pageant Ever, and then went to Casa to go watch it live. They wrote across all genres. In fifth grade, we wrote adventure books. We have Economics Market Day where the fifth grade, they have jobs that they get paid for and they, one of the jobs is a police officer and they get paid to keep others doing what they're supposed to do and they take it very seriously and they're very respectful of that position. I love it. There's also entrepreneurs and they get to produce the goods and services for Market Day and they sell their goods and services based on the class bucks that they've earned. We have worked on improving cursive in writing. We tossed some tortillas in the gym and grafted on a coordinate plane. And this year, we did something different with ARC. We needed another fifth grade class to balance out our numbers, so we split ARC Core and ERLA. So we have a class that is dedicated to the core of ARC, really research and writing. And then we have an ERLA class, Independent Reading Class, where they work on variety of things from book studies to reading independently and building that stamina, to cursive, to diagramming sentences, I mean, all kinds of things that we can do in that class. Engagement doesn't stop there. It also continues with our specials in CLI. Ms. Rodriguez in CLI, we have a CLI rotation in our specials and she makes reading and hands-on fun with art projects. They've built gingerbread houses after reading a gingerbread book. They have did an elf buddy book where they had to check out, them and a buddy had to check out the same book and read it and talk about it. She did fact or fiction with our Taylor Swift poster contest on deciphering what is fact and what is opinion. In STEM, we did the CTE posters. You saw the amazing winners tonight. They have worked on stop-motion animation. We have an amazing augmented reality sandbox in our STEM lab that our very own Juan and Ernest built themselves and helped students learn about science and geography with really hands-on. In music, you've seen the student engagement with the In music, you've seen the student engagement with the choir, the little ones do all kinds of different things with boomsticks and drums, our music programs that we put on, as well as our end-of-the-year talent show, so, we are engaged with our students. I'm gonna pass it over to Mrs. Duckett to talk about our imagination station.
Good evening. So, I think I've talked to a couple of you about our idea this year, we, after getting settled in last year and this year into our new school at Legacy, having K5 together, we started hearing some concerns that students, number one, didn't have enough time to play, teachers are spending so much time on that depth and breadth of academics, they just don't have time to play, if you know anything about child development, play is critical at the little ages. So, we really brainstormed, and I, a lot of the brainstorming came from Stacy Brown and Janet Plemons, so we just kind of helped foster this idea of how can we create a space for our students to have time to play and learn some of those social skills that they need, like sharing and communicating with their friends, and this brainchild came out of that, of our imagination station. If you haven't had a chance to come visit it, please, you're welcome anytime, we'd love to have you. So it has different stations within it, from our Home Depot-looking tool station, to a car station with a carpet that has roads, we have a barbecue, that's one of my favorite pictures up there, there's two kitchen sets alongside a barbecue pit, so we can cook inside or outside. The kids absolutely love the store, we had to get more buggies for them to be able to play and share, because everybody wants a buggy and everybody wants a cash register, so it's just, they're learning all kinds of skills during that time, and learning to work with one another, and lots, there's lots of different groups that can go in there and play. Sometimes the speech teacher will take in some kids and work on some of that social communication, sometimes first grade will go in and they'll just do stories and work together and play together, sometimes the counselor will take in kiddos and work on conflict resolution, or whatever it is that we need to work on, sometimes we just go in and play, because quite honestly, playing with five-year-olds will make your day. So, it's just become a really neat space for them to work together productively, and we've been really excited about it and really pleased with how the kids have just absolutely loved it. Any questions about that?
Yes, have we extended this to the other elementaries?
We have not, we've talked about it a little bit, I think we talked about it in our AP meetings, but I don't know if it's gone any further than that, but they're always welcome to come visit and hang out and see if you like it.
Thank you.
Yeah. We started clubs around October, this is an opportunity for our students to have some voice and choice in doing some kind of extracurricular activities within the school day, so the staff members come up with different club areas that they would like to do themselves, anything from origami to dancing, music, sports, running, coloring, anything you can see up there. The students are then broken up into bands, K1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and then they self-select clubs that they want to participate in, and they go to the club every Friday and just get to enjoy something that, again, is just outside of that core academic time, which is still critical to child development, and they're getting to expand their brains and options and kind of see the world in a little bit different way than just math. We go every Friday, and then we change after spring break, I think we're gonna change up the groups and they'll get to choose a different group from there for the rest of the school year. Any questions on that? Alright.
Alright, and discuss our PLCs, PLCs are super important to our planning, they're not just a meeting, it's not something that just happens in a room, PLCs happen all throughout the week, we just happen to have a designated PLC time where we meet, these are data-driven instructions, this is where data-driven discussions come out, teachers look at their summative data from MIM class and MAP and ERLA and CBAs, as well as their formative data, grading on the fly, checking the kids for understanding, exit tickets, and see where are the gaps and where are they excelling at, so that we can really drive our instruction based on the needs that the kids are exhibiting. It's also a planning time, but it's also a time to celebrate things that are going well, and we try to do a great job of that, Mrs. Plemons leads our PLCs, and some quotes from teachers about our PLC, or Mrs. Plemons is very helpful, teachers appreciate keeping us all on this, appreciate the PLCs keeping us all on the same page, and they find value in this time that we set aside for it. Alright, we talked already about Seabass, but I wanted to really talk about pillar one, we're still on track for 1.2, that's explore content at a deep level, that was really the introduction of ARC, and then this year, when we split ARC Core in our ERLA classes, so that we can really utilize that time for what it is meant. Learning is aligned to student needs, I believe that PLCs really feed into this, our standards-based report cards, fifth grade has, saw a need to put some time in, take away from the content class, but build in a win time, we had a win time last year when we split to four rotations, we use that time for content area time, but they just noticed that they needed an allotted amount of time to really use that with intention, whether it is going deeper with the curriculum for some students, or the content for some students, or using that time to remediate and make sure we fill in any gaps, especially with math and science. And then pillar two, we're staying, we haven't made any changes, we're gonna look at potentially implementing some more CTE-based conversations as far as next year, but as far as this year, we haven't done anything different in this particular pillar. Any questions?
Yes, question regarding the pillars.
Yes, sir.
So, if I was to quiz one of your teachers, are they going to be able to correlate, or do you have discussions with them to help them understand what is occurring day-to-day and how that ties back to our pillars?
Right, in full transparency, I could do a better job of using the pillar language, they have heard it from me, we have discussed it, we have broken down pillars at professional learning on campus, a lot of this is discussed, but could I use better pillar language? Yes.
Wasn't a test question.
Oh, I know. False.
It was really trying- Maybe it should've been a test question. No, really, again, from the board, being on the board, I'm looking at the pillars, again, those are our guiding, again, pillars of what we're trying to do-
Hundred percent.
-trying to achieve, and then breaking it down, and then obviously going to the next level, but in my mind, if it doesn't get down to what occurs on a day-to-day-
Right.
-we might not have that full linkage the way we want it to.
So how I would answer that is, I know it in my head and we talk about it, I am not on the Mr. Frazier, Mr. Flood level yet, to put that into a verb, they have those conversations a lot more than I do, we have conversations about the content that each pillar houses, but if I were to say, "What is 1.3?", I don't know that they could name that, but we have these conversations, what does learning at a deeper level look like, what does engagement look like, what does learning can happen anywhere, anytime, like, we have those conversations, so they know that, yes, sir.
That's the connection that I was looking for.
So true, yes.
Thank you.
Got it. And that is Legacy Elementary in a slideshow. Any questions?
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Great job, thank y'all for coming.
Thank you to all the teachers for being here tonight, I know it's Wednesday night, kind of an impact of, you know, an hour and forty-five minutes of being here, but thank you all for being here and demonstrating what, again, the passion that you have for our kids in education. We're gonna take a five-minute recess, and then we will reconvene at 7:43. Alright, if I could have board members come back to their posts, we will get started. Alright, it's 7:44, we will reconvene. Next, we have business items. Consider the consent agenda items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented and recommended.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Marissa and a second by Terry, is there any discussion?
I just had a question, I noticed that there was a budget amendment item, but I didn't see any budget amendments, is there no budget amendment?
Kayla, there's no budget amendment this month.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we will consider approval of the annual audit.
This is just approval of the audit that was presented earlier.
I make a motion to approve the annual audit from Snow Garrett and Williams for year ended August 21st, 2003, as presented and recommended.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Krista, and I did not catch the second. Okay, and I have a second by Marissa, is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Alright, next we have the, consider approval of the CTE month resolution.
So, board, this is the resolution I spoke to earlier that declares February as CTE month, that resolution is your board, and my recommendation is that you approve that piece of documentation, and we celebrate CTE.
So you can get excited.
Just a teeny-nanny bit.
Will this be every February of every year?
Yes, ma'am, we did this last February, along with poster winners last February, and that's the intention to continue to do this every February, as long as you'll let me keep talking about the great things we do for kids.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for CTE month as presented for February.
Second it. I have a motion by Terry and a second by Dennis, is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. And next, we will discuss and consider Tarleton Today MOU.
Go ahead.
So, board, this is our first look at the renewal of our MOU for next school year, for the 24-25 school year, we'll bring it back next month for vote and approval for us to be ready to go with those courses. Just as a refresher, Tarleton Today is operated as a dual enrollment program, not a dual credit program, and the slight differences in those two are, the dual enrollment allows students to either accept or reject the college grade on their college transcript, so if they take a course and aren't satisfied with the grade, then they can reject the college credit. Additionally, their high school grade can be different than what they earn in the college course, so, our high school teacher can curve tests if there's content that they feel like wasn't presented in a rigorous enough method, or can add assignments for students, so their high school grade can be different than their college grade. The great partnership, piece of the partnership with Tarleton is that they also allow our teachers to be the teacher of record, without some of the restrictions that other higher ed partners require, like the master-degreed hours, our teachers don't have to have the eighteen hours in that content area to be able to offer the dual credit. That comes because Tarleton professors write the curriculum and scope and sequence the curriculum, and then our teachers simply deliver the content based on that course that the Tarleton professors have written. We currently offer two ad courses in college algebra in partnership with Tarleton, our teachers do report that the rigor is absolutely there on these courses, it is definitely a college-level course, and the pace that those courses are sequenced at is quite rigorous. It's probably been the biggest challenge- It's probably been the biggest challenge for our ag teachers, especially considering their stock show season, LDEs and CDEs, and the amount of days that they're off campus. We have been very open and transparent with Tarleton about that. They have already made adjustments from the fall semester to spring, and we've seen some relief there. And they're incredibly open and receptive to continued feedback from us, and I anticipate there'll be even additional changes moving into next school year to make sure that that is a smooth transition for our teachers. On the college algebra course, our teacher was hesitant at first because there was a philosophical difference in calculator access for students at the higher-level math tier. They are accustomed to having a graphing calculator and having access to that graphing calculator, and Tarleton doesn't want students to have access to that. They want students to practice the problems by hand. So we had a lot of conversations about that. We stuck with Tarleton's philosophy, and we have trudged through that, and Ms. Heath has come on board, and she is a firm believer in Tarleton's method. She has seen tremendous returns on number fluency in her classroom, and when looking at test scores, she cites sixty percent of her students met or exceeded their RIT scores, which means they exceeded what their growth measures were anticipated to be, and has seen more growth for that higher echelon of students, which is already harder to obtain because they're already at the top of the top. So when she cites a student move from the ninety-seventh percentile to the ninety-ninth percentile in college algebra on a map test, that's pretty significant considering where that student started, and she attributes that to the calculator philosophy and the rigor of the course that the students are having through Tarleton. So we're excited about that and excited about the level that it pushes our students to perform at in those courses.
I'd like to speak to that college algebra class. My sophomore is enrolled in it, and it is very rigorous, but the dividends that I'm seeing her reap are huge, and so I'm a huge proponent of that class. And the relationship and partnership that we've established with Tarleton, I think it's hands down one of the better things I've seen us do in a while, so.
Absolutely. Our plan for next year at this point is to continue with college algebra, the ag courses, which are an ag business management and advanced animal science course, and then to add an English course. They have some other offerings, but we're wanting to implement with fidelity in those different areas. And another reason why we feel that this is a strong move for us as a district is because it does allow our teachers, which are in-district teachers, to administer the content, which is a more gradual release of students moving from high school courses to college-level coursework, and creates that bridge for them there, and provides the security for a student who wants to try a dual-credit course to say, oh, this is dual enrollment. If I try this and I'm not successful, this isn't going to go on my college transcript as a failing grade, and I can still pass my high school course even if I'm not successful at college. But we can always encourage those students to push themselves and try to reach higher goals in that with those safety nets in place. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about our partnership with Tarleton in this MOU, but we'll bring it back to you next month for approval.
Do have a follow-up question. Do you know of other school districts that have similar MOU as we have, using it in the manner we do versus the true dual-credit method?
Tarleton is the only university that I'm aware of that does dual enrollment versus dual credit at this point, and they do have quite a few districts partnering with them.
Yeah, let me ask my question differently. Is Stevenville using the same method, or pick another school district around?
Yes. I think they have thirty-three partners that have signed on with them, and this was their first year to offer dual enrollment. It was a part of House Bill Eight in their response to House Bill Eight, which attempts to provide dual-credit opportunities for low socioeconomic students. The good part of House Bill Eight is that it's going to reduce the cost of dual credit for all of our students with all of our partnerships. So it caps the fee as fifty dollars per credit hour for dual-credit courses for all students, and if they're free or reduced, then the course is provided to them for free as a part of House Bill Eight. So that's one piece of legislation at the state level that I can get behind and support. But yes, Tarleton has quite a few partners. And the same struggles that we've had with our ag teachers, they have heard from other districts. I've talked to Dr. Underwood several times about this. He's heard that from other districts, and they are absolutely trying to address that as a university.
Any other questions? And don't let Dr. Nix fool you. She gets into Tarleton, she'll dig into them if they do something that we don't agree with. If there's a philosophical difference, she'll get in on it.
It's a conversation, sir. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, next, we will discuss and consider the approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six academic calendar.
Twenty-five, twenty-six, as crazy as that is to say, but as a reminder, you know, we got in a rut, we were, it seemed like we were getting in a rush in the spring and trying to get the calendar and get into people's hands, and so we've been operating this a year ahead. So the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar was approved last year, and so now we're coming with the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar. So the District Improvement Committee approved this with unanimous vote. The calendar is essentially the same as what we have operated the last few years with one little exception. The, last year, there was the discussion about, let's go to one half-day at the end of each semester. Well, after having experienced that, through further conversation, the District Improvement Committee said we would like to go back to two. And so that is the one minor change that you will see on this calendar from the one that we have this year and for twenty-four, twenty-five, is that there are two half-days in December and two half-days in May. We have maintained the same number of instructional days. The quarters are the exact same length, the number of staff development days, and where those are strategically placed to give teachers time to do their planning and do their preparations and designing engaging learning experiences. Fall break, Christmas, spring break, everything falls right in line with where we are. So there are no significant changes, and we recommend it as presented.
Mr. Carnes, I have a question. So approving a district calendar this far in advance, if there were to be something that, like you were saying, they come back and say, we want the two half-days. If there's no problems with us coming back and making that change, is it brought back to us for reapproval? What is?
Well, so technically, once it's approved by y'all, actually, Rich has authority to make any minor changes. Of course, we wouldn't do that without talking to y'all, which, by the way, since you brought up, there was discussion around the twenty-four, twenty-five calendar, and which we haven't made that change yet, but to go back to the two half-days at the end of each semester for twenty-four, twenty-five. No significant structural changes to it at all, just, hey, can we do that for next year? And so the intent is, is that we would add, make that minor change and communicate that to say, hey, we're going to have two half-days instead of one next year. I couldn't, okay. But yes, so, yeah, any other questions around the school calendar?
I make a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six academic calendar as presented and recommended.
I have a motion by Krista and a second by Dennis. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll have the first review of a staffing update for twenty-four, twenty-five.
And so this is very preliminary, just a first run at this, and really, I don't have any numbers or anything to present to you. I just want to let y'all know where we were in the process. I am extremely excited that Spencer is starting Monday and that we can start, yeah. So, yeah, because I'm done. So, yeah, so it's been good, but we do need to look at, you know, fiscally responsible with the FTEs or the positions that we're looking to add. So we've really just begun the discussions, and really what we did was we took a really, like, big wish list, pie in the sky, we can have everything, and then we worked it down to reality, to conservative, and really operating in an ultra-conservative mode of adding positions, and considering what enrollment, where we're at right now, what are the projections and different things. So our next step is, once Spencer comes on board, is we're going to get a little more guidance into what's doable. And then, so then, next month, we should be able to bring back to you and say, okay, here's what we're, the positions that we're looking at, at each campus and across the district. So really, nothing more than just wanted to make you aware of kind of where we are in the process, and so that we can get those positions approved and discussion on that, and then posted as soon as possible so that we don't want to run out of time and lose a lot of teachers that might want to come here but took a job elsewhere because we weren't ready. So we're trying to get there as fast as we can.
So that would be a question that I have some concern over is historically, we have determined whatever number of positions prior to spring break.
Yes, sir.
As we know historically, teachers will look for those opportunities while on spring break.
Yes, sir.
Though what I just heard you describe sounds like it would be beyond that. So is that a concern?
Yes, sure. But that's why we're going to hit the ground running here with him and get some guidelines and stuff on it, and it's going to be priority for us now. And we've done, he's not, you know, so we're not starting at the starting line, so we're already, you know, we've already got some things to present and go over, and so we are, you know, we're down the track a little ways.
So you're saying that Spencer has to play catch-up?
He's got it. Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but our intention is that we will get them just ASAP and have the discussion and the presentation and to be able to get those, you know, maybe it might be just after spring break, you know, at the end of March instead of first of March, maybe, so.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Okay, next, consider amendment to the District of Innovation.
Okay, so the District Improvement Committee approved this unanimously as well, so an amendment to the District of Innovation Plan. So under unauthorized persons, refusal of entry, ejection, and identification, the district is requesting an amendment to the plan regarding the two-year limit that an individual may be denied entry to property. And so the Texas Education Code requires that the term for refusal of entry is limited to two years. Godley's Plan is what we are seeking permission to do, is to make decisions regarding the length of denied entry locally on the needs of the district, students, staff, visitors, and to prioritize the physical and mental well-being of students, staff, and visitors. So in the amendment, we prioritize the physical and mental well-being of students and staff, and we do believe in second chances. However, if after two years an individual continues to pose a substantial risk of harm, or the person continues to behave in a manner that is inappropriate for a school setting, the district should be able to determine whether that person should be granted entry to its property. If this person is denied entry beyond two years, the Safety and Security Committee would reevaluate the status annually. So we bring this to you. Again, the District Improvement Committee approved this without dissent, and it was very well received by them. So we bring this to you for approval as presented.
My question would be, why would we want to circumvent state law? There's obviously a reason that that law exists. What would be the reason to want to circumvent that two-year maximum law?
I can answer that. If our teachers don't feel safe is one, that would be a good one. But to that question, everything we do at District of Innovation technically is circumventing. It's not circumventing. It's requesting relief.
Relief.
From a certain law. That's what District of Innovation is.
So it's my understanding that the Safety and Security Committee would be the committee that would determine if that two-year would be, or if we would extend time onto someone's two years. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Would the, an individual be allowed to be part of that discussion on the committee? Would they be, would they go before the committee? I know this is all hypothetical, like, we've never done this before, but how do you guys see that happening?
And I'm going to also ask, would our Godley Police Department be involved in that, being safety and security?
Potentially, they could be. Yes, certainly. If they were involved from, you know, in whatever aspect, then yes, they could be involved in that as well. Yes, ma'am.
And we've talked about administration can come together if someone was, I don't know how we characterize it. I know we had one parent that was not allowed to be on campus, and they came to us, and we agreed that they were, I mean, they were. We let him back on early because of great behavior. They'd kind of turned it around and, you know, came and spoke with us, so, you know, we will definitely, if things improve, we'll, you know, consider that as well.
So the fact that that question wasn't really answered, we are real sure how that's going to, I mean.
Did I not come back to, I'm sorry?
So, yeah, what's that going to look like at the committee level?
Oh, so at the committee, so obviously, there's the group, the Safety and Security Committee that's brought together, and so then the facts would be presented to them for their consideration, and then their recommendation on yes or no.
Can you review who sits on that committee for those of us who, I mean, I sit on the committee, so I know who sits on the committee, but there's two board members, the board president.
I think by law, the board president has to, the superintendent has to by law, another board member, I don't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, I was about to say, Brian, that might be able to answer that question real easily.
See, we have a board president has to be on the committee, and superintendent has to be on the committee, and we have, I believe, there's one board member, three parents, our Godley PD chief, Godley fire chief, Godley ISD, PD chief, Quinteros, Mrs. Evans, who's on our, who's our counseling coordinator, and myself. I believe that's the committee off the top of my head, but, yeah, we, by law, we've got to have the superintendent and board president have to be on the committee.
And what is, do you remember what a core, or is it a quorum on a committee level? Like, to have a meeting and have it count as one of our meetings, it has to be a certain?
Man, I looked last night. It's open to the Open Meetings Act, but I didn't read anywhere in the statute when I kind of reread it last night that there has to be a quorum present. I don't know that. I would obviously read that, you know, as we got closer to the meeting and when people came in to make sure we did have a quorum, but I do know it's subject to that. We have to post an agenda, seventy-two hours in our normal way. We can go into executive session, and it's, the committee can also make decisions. They can take actions. But mostly, their, I mean, their primal function is to advise on safety of the district. That's what the, kind of, the statute says.
One of our other questions was, would the parent be involved in those discussions if you were considering extending that time? I don't know if you answered that, but that is a good question. Oh, could be, okay.
You know, honestly, we would have to just look into that. Obviously, I would like to consult with our attorney to see what we need to do legally. Obviously, we would do in the best interest of the district and move forward based on that advice. That's where I'm going to stand right now, because I'm not going to tell you that I know that is yes or no.
And then also, would there be an event that would lead up to extending this two-year period? What would go into the decision-making of that?
I need more clarification. I don't understand.
I mean, if, let's just say someone did something and the district barred them from the facilities for two years. If the district is considering extending that time, would it be because of a new event or some more behavior? Or are you just extending that time from the first event two years prior? Does that question make sense?
Probably from an event or a continued pattern of behavior.
Okay.
Not, I think I understand what you're saying. I don't think we, when this, when we thought about this, it wasn't to add to the original behavior, unless the original behavior was just, I mean, ultra-terrible, but I think it would be a continued pattern of behavior.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
I don't see that we actually have the written motion, so I'm gonna wing it. I make a motion to consider amending our District of Innovation Plan as presented.
I'll second.
Yeah.
I have a motion by Marissa, a second by Terry. Any further discussion? All those in favor? opposed? Motion passes five to one.
Thank you.
Okay, and we will at 8:09 go to closed session to discuss three different areas. Section 551.072, purchase, exchange, lease, value of real property. 551.073, discuss or negotiate contracts of prospective gifts and donations. Thirdly, 551.074, discussion personnel to, or to hear complaints against personnel.
I would like it on the record that I am abstaining from executive session due to the proposal of the wastewater treatment plant not being properly notated on the agenda.
I'm sorry, say that again? Not properly notated on the agenda?
Yes, I contacted Tasby Legal and I believe it's not properly notated, so I don't feel comfortable...
Things we talk about in closed session aren't notated on the agenda, that's the reason we're in closed session.
They said a wastewater treatment plant is of public interest and it should be notated on the agenda.
No, ma'am, you're incorrect.
That's what Tasby Legal said.
It's, it is, it is a closed session item, but, okay.
Can I add one more thing for the Legacy Spotlight? It was so my fault. I didn't see my amazing PTO board here and I could not go an evening without thanking them. They are absolutely amazing and we could not have done what we have done this year without their support, so I just wanted to say thank you publicly.
Love you too.
All right, we are out of closed session at 8:48. Do I have a motion? All right. We are adjourned.